Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Select Board meeting for February 3, 2025. The purpose of this meeting is to review and appoint members to the Charter Committee. This meeting is not being broadcast live on LCTV, but it will be recorded. So we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the two republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And so everyone's aware.
You can't hear your own microphone or not.
They're on.
They're on. So just so everyone's aware, Matthew is on Zoom. So he, I don't think he's behind us, but he, I can see his screen in front of us. So we have 15 applicants, and I want to say that I am very pleased by that. When we put this out, we asked, we were hoping for a committee of seven to nine, and I was desperately hoping we could fill it. So thank you, everyone, for applying. So do you, how does the board want to go through this? Do you want to hear a little bit from each one and then ask questions across? Or?
Sure.
Yeah, that's what that works. If people want to speak.
That's great.
I think they should be allowed to. If they don't, you don't have to speak. But if you'd like to add, I know a lot of the information we got was either a short, two-sentence blurb, but if there's more you'd like to add, please, please do so, so we have a better understanding. I know, I think most of us are familiar with maybe a little over half. So, and I know each of us probably knows somebody, but there's a few faces I don't recognize in the room, so it'd be good at least to meet that way if you come forward to speak.
So we'll start with you, Alan. You're the first on the list. Do you want to come up and say a few words?
I'm Alan McCray. You know me. I know all of you. I don't want to be in competition. I'm just here to offer my expertise and longstanding in the town. If I can be helpful, I'd be glad to. If I'm not chosen, that's fine, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Alan?
Anyone have any questions for Alan at this, or?
So Alan, you are FinCom? You were on FinCom for quite a while.
About 20 years or so.
Yeah. And then you were also on the Personnel Board?
Yep. Personnel Board for about the same amount of time. I have some expertise in DPW operations. I've commissioned public works in Somerville for several years.
Your Director of Personnel experience, is that, so I assume that's HR?
I'm sorry.
You have Director of Personnel listed in Somerville?
Yeah, Somerville and in Everett.
Yeah. So HR type work?
Full-time, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Now, just, I'm going to say this to everybody. Thank you for putting yourself out there.
Yep.
Betsy?
Hi. Betsy Bowling. I was on FinCom for several terms, short timer based on Alan.
The old timer.
And I've done other things in town. My career was IT with a business accounting background mostly, implementing systems, big systems, SAP and other places. So a lot of going into organizations because implementing the software was kind of the easy part, I always said. Had to understand how things worked, how the processes work and so on, and then try to figure out all that together with the software, how you make things work. So this is interesting to me, but did what Alan said, you know, get the best team, and if it's not me, not, my feelings won't be hurt. Okay? But happy to contribute if I can.
Thank you.
Anything else?
You know, I think we probably ask each candidate kind of that one standard question. What's, I mean, you signed up for the, what's your interest in it? What's the, what's the end result for you?
I haven't learned to keep my hands under my seat yet, but no, I mean, because of what I said, I mean, I've done this other places, and so I'm interested in the town. Obviously, I have an vested interest living here. I want it to be right. And so I've said for a while, as things get more complicated and more involved, it just, do we need something different, something more? So interested in doing it and learning how it work. I mean, there's a learning part from my standpoint, too. You've got the consultants coming in, so how does the process work? And then just learning more about how the town does work now and trying to understand better how it, maybe it should.
Okay.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you again. Thank you.
Brian Tarbox could not be here tonight. He's, everyone knows him from the Finance Committee. Charlotte?
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Charlotte.
So I'm probably one of the newer faces in town. I moved here with my family in 2020, and so I have two small children, age five and seven. And we so far just had such an incredible experience living in Littleton. My husband and I moved here, and yeah, we felt incredibly welcomed. I have a background in public health. It's my day job. I work with, I'm with an international nonprofit, and I work with governments around the world and quite keen to try to apply some of that experience. And as many others have said already, just try to offer what I can to this process. I recognize that I come in with very little experience of, you know, government and governance structures here in Massachusetts, but I kind of hope that that would allow me to have some fresh eyes, offer perhaps a fresh perspective, ask the dumb questions maybe, but the ones that might shed some light on interesting aspects of the town structure. Yeah, happy to answer any questions that you have, but that's a little bit about me.
Go back to the same one?
Yeah.
She kind of answered it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I was just going to say, Charlotte, I've gotten to know you through, you were interested in town affairs from the very beginning, as soon as we met, and now you're on Sustainability Committee. So I just wanted to thank you for jumping in with both feet already.
Yeah, absolutely.
And for putting yourself out there on this in particular.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, just thank you. I was just curious, 2020, with your interest in Littleton during that time, that's a tough time to be moving, A, if you know the pandemic, but.
Yeah, it probably belies a little bit of my analytical mind, for better or for worse. We had an opportunity to move to this general area and sort of the concentric circles of planning in terms of where we should move to. But actually, one of the things when you, when you really go, you know, 10 tabs deep into Google, it's amazing how even down there, the spirit of Littleton comes out. People just really raving about the community. And so that was really what cinched it for us, and we're lucky that it's turned out the way it has. And I have been really excited to be part of the Sustainability Committee. It's, it's very, it's fascinating, I think, as, so I mentioned that learning curve, really understanding how you can affect change and have a positive impact. But then, yeah, being able to see that come to fruition.
So what style of town government did you come from previously?
That's a great question.
DC, right?
Well, over the last 20, almost 30 years, I've lived in India, Cambodia, Indonesia, DC, California.
Everything from tribal to?
I lived in Papua. So I think, yeah, I don't know, a lot of different, a lot of different types of administration, exposure to both very kind of national level, district level, and then also my work, just, you know, the different ways in which, you know, different places organize themselves. And obviously, I was born in the UK as well, so, yeah.
I have a question.
Anyone else?
All set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mark.
Mark?
Hello.
George Sanders.
Oh, hey, oh, Mark.
Mark, 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 Mark.
Hello.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to appear here tonight with regards to the future benefit of the town of Littleton. I'm a transplant to New England. I'm originally from South Carolina, Pelleton, South Carolina, and we had the first farmer's hole that was built in America. And I joined the service and been around the world a couple times there. And I spent 30 years in the military there. And my family is here. We have three children that's going, two went through the school system here in Littleton, and one is in, a freshman here in Littleton High School here. Every place I've been, when I first came up here, I came to Fort Devens and ended up living in Pittsburgh and ended up on home down in Pittsburgh and retired here out the intelligence command at Fort Devens. Every place I've been, I've always made it my business to be a part of the community, doing whatever I could for the community, because you have to like where you're living at. And I like living here in Littleton. I had my home built here in 97. And I love Littleton. It's a great place. Lot of great people in this town. Lot of respectful people in this town. And a lot of people that does a fantastic job in this town as volunteers, just like so many came up here tonight for this Charter Committee to be appointed. I like to do what I can. I make myself available to do what I can. I know a lot about government. I've been around government about 62 years, so I'm no stranger to towns or cities. And I've accomplished a lot of things in the communities that I've been in. And I've participated in various boards and so forth here in Littleton, the first one being the Disability Commission back in 2002, and I've been on that committee ever since. It's a great opportunity for me to participate in whatever the town of Littleton charges this committee with and what we want to accomplish. We must be united as a people of this town in order to accomplish the goals and objectives that we would like to accomplish here in the town of Littleton. And I look forward to helping you if I can, and I thank you kindly.
Thank you, Judge.
Does anyone have a?
Judge, hang on a second. Just hang on a second.
Do you have anyone?
I don't have anything specific, no, but I didn't know if.
Okay. Thank you. Matthew, do you, can you, do you have your audio working now?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. I wanted to ask Charlotte a question, but you couldn't hear me.
Yeah. Do you want to come, come back up? Yeah. Go ahead, Matthew.
Sorry about that. So I think several of the board members are interested in a focus on sustainability for the future of the town, as it's a challenge that I don't think we've really dealt with. I'm curious if you could tell us a little bit about why you joined Sustainability. Was there something specific?
Partly, it was an area where I felt like I would be able to contribute potentially. I'm still feeling my way around and trying to understand where I may be able to, to provide some support where I can. And really, because I do think it's an area I'm passionate about, I think with whatever we're doing in Littleton, we have to be thinking about how do we best serve our current interests, but also our future interests. You know, the Littleton of 20 years from now, of 100 years from now, of 300 years from now. And having two young children also, it's, you know, you can't not be thinking about what their future also looks like. So it is something I'm quite passionate about, understanding more how we can put those things into actionable steps within a town like Littleton. So yeah, I'm still very much learning, but I, I think it's an area where I have been quite excited about the potential so far.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Knox?
Hello, all.
Mr. Knox.
I'm originally from Littleton.
How long have you been here?
Can't ask that question.
Almost all that time. I, I have a true interest in the town from many aspects. A lot of times I hear people say it's not the same as it used to be, they're having problems. But we look at, we were located with two major highways and a, and a train and whatever. I think the town overall, for all these years, has done well to maintain its rural character, and it's been done because of town government. Now, as town, as time goes on, town government does have to get studied over and over again, because we know there's something that's always needs to be changed and not changed. And I'm happy to say that I've been involved with Littleton in one aspect or another since 1983. I've been on a number of committees that, you know, I've been on. One of the committees was a Town Government Study Committee in 2006 and 2007 that I chaired. And I, that committee, we actually dealt with the same division that came out to talk to you. And they gave us great guidance, and we, out of the, almost two years of study that we did, I think we had 14 things that we put down as things that we thought could be improved, and I think a lot of them came true, but a lot of them fell by the wayside. As time goes on, new people come in and things need to be reviewed. So I, I look forward to having the possibility of participating and going through this study to see what changes could be made to make a town function even better and to stay on the, on the right track.
I think it's admirable that you've been volunteering for the town right out of high school.
Almost.
Before you were out of high school, is that what you're saying? Anyone have questions for Mr. Knox?
I had to get something in there. I always do something. I usually go the other way, though.
Yeah, just, you know, reviewing that committee's findings, you know, I think back, back then, there wasn't discussion really of a charter. I don't know why it didn't press.
The charter was, was brought up.
But it didn't.
At the meeting that we had, DLS actually came out and sat with us when we first formed the committee, and there was some talk of a charter, but I think the feeling at that time is that the time, the time, the amount of time we wanted to put in some changes would be a lot shorter than if we went through the whole charter system. So I think it got dropped almost at the very first meeting. We just decided to go in that angle without doing that and just go by, by laws that are put in.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
The next one on the list is Jeff Yates, who I don't actually see every, he's the Chair, current Chair at the Planning Board and was on the Board of Appeals. Kevin Brogan.
Good evening. My name is Kevin, and I have lived in Littleton since 2018. I got smart and moved from Groton over to Littleton. I've been serving on the Personal Advisory Committee with Gary for about three years now, I think since it was reformulated, and I'm enjoying that a great deal. I used to serve on the Personnel Committee in Groton. I also served on the Sustainability Committee, I don't know, Committee Initiative in Groton, which was, I don't know what the nature of the Sustainability Committee here is in this town, but that effort was about the future financial stability of the town, given constraints on tax increases and spending, and the whole issue was, were we in a long-term sustainable position? I moved from New York State with my wife back in, I think, 2015, actually, and moved into Groton, but then moved over here in 18. And I work in human resources, have all my life, continue to serve in human resources. Today, I'm an HR Director at an organization that provides virtual mental health care. And our, the reason we moved from New York State to this area is our only child, our daughter, went to Bentley College and settled down, married a guy, settled down over an heir, and we didn't want to be five hours away from our only child. Now we live one town away from our daughter and son-in-law and two beautiful grandchildren. And my reason for volunteering is I like working on interesting and impactful things. This seems like it is and will be interesting and impactful, and I guess I also enjoy change management. I think change is a good thing. I say that on a regular basis. I think change is an opportunity, and this sounds like a great opportunity, and I love working on things like that.
Thank you.
You are welcome.
Any questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Kyle, I can't, I don't know how to pronounce your last name.
It's okay. I'll pronounce it.
Thank you.
Hi. So my name is Kyle Bupp. My family and I moved to Littleton in October of '23, so we're relatively new here.
Welcome.
Thank you. We have felt very welcome. It's, it's a wonderful town, and that's kind of part of why I want to either, you know, either do this or serve in some capacity for the community. So if it's not this, it's going to be something else. Professionally, I spent almost 20 years in cybersecurity. I've done work for the DOD, the DOJ, the DOE. Now I lead a global defensive team that sets out all the defensive strategies for a company called JLL. We're 83 countries, 110,000 employees. So I solve interesting problems on a daily basis, and I thought I could lend some of my analytical thinking in mind to this committee. And how we chose Littleton, I mean, you should see how many spreadsheets we had. We had so much data about every town and, you know, tax rates and education, so I figured I could lend my hand and throw my hat in the ring.
You could share those spreadsheets with Mr. Knox. He's in real estate.
Happy to share.
Did you move from out of state or within?
Yes, we moved, it was about a 900-mile drive, so.
So the Massachusetts style of town government is a?
It's new to us. It's, it's a welcome surprise, though. The government that I moved from, so I was in Knoxville, Tennessee, I had no idea what they did in that government. It wasn't open. I didn't feel represented, so I liked, I've been to multiple meetings just as an attendee. I like the, the style of government.
Did you make the right choice?
Absolutely. I will never leave. I guess that's also part of why I want to, you know, serve in some capacity to the towns, because, so I have two daughters. I want to grow up, see them grow up here, and I just want to, you know, be a part of the town and the government.
Peyton or Eli?
Peyton.
I knew the answer before I asked the question. Knoxville.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
And if this doesn't work out, we will find you. We'll be involved.
Nomination papers are open for?
A list.
Karen McCloskey.
Hi, everyone. Karen McCloskey. I've lived in Littleton for 25 years. This is my first, actually, a little bit more than 25 years, but this is my first foray into town government. I've done a lot of other community volunteering at other organizations, and I now find myself with time to participate in a different scale. So I applied for this committee position because I thought it was just a really unique opportunity to sort of step back and take a look at what it means to have a town government, what best practices are, and then help position Littleton for continued growth and success, and how are we going to manage all these things that are getting thrown at us from all different directions. So happy to have the opportunity to participate in that way. For work experience, I recently left a long-term position and am now working part-time at the Greater Lowell Community Foundation, helping out with development and fundraising. And what I bring to the table from professional experience is a lot of program and management at tech companies, acquisition, integration, strategic corporate initiatives. I've also had roles as Corporate Controller and in Financial Planning and Analysis. So looking forward to doing what I can to help out the team and see where we can take the, take the position.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Laverty?
Pat actually reached out to me. He was unable to get a family committee. He was unable to.
Okay. Rob Houston?
So Rob Houston, I think I know all of you. You know all of me. Unlike other, you know, I'm fascinated by the, the people in this community, right? It's, it's amazing. We moved here in 2016. Our spreadsheet was not a spreadsheet. It was very little went into picking Littleton, other than turning the choice over to my 15-year-old daughter, saying, we're moving to Massachusetts. Sweetie, where do you want to move to? She did the research. She did the spreadsheet. She did the tables. She picked Littleton, and here we are. And it frankly is the best decision she ever made for us. We couldn't be happier being here. You all know my wife is actively involved. She, she chose to get involved starting Week One, hitting Littleton. I've been slower. I'm a little more deliberative. My background is in, I'm a lawyer. I'm a small business lawyer. I've represented businesses for over 30 years. So what I do is I listen. I, I'm not a strategic planner. I'm not a spreadsheet person. I'm a listener, and I gather information in. I take it in. I analyze it. I assess it, and I give what I think for 30 years and my clients has been exceptional advice. So that's what I do, is I listen and I provide input where I think it's helpful, and I would like to be able to do that on this Charter Commission or Committee. I think I love the New England style of town government. Town meeting is fascinating, and I didn't know anything about it until I moved here. But representative democracy as a lawyer is, you know, I love it. I think it's, it's cool. And I think through this process, one of the goals really is to how to get more active government of our citizenry so that we can properly represent them and how it integrates with our town manager, town administrator, and our personnel to operate efficiently and effectively for the citizens. So that's me and what I want to do.
Thank you.
Questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert House?
Good evening. I think I know you, all of you. I think over my life, what I've done is I've listened to a lot of people. I managed to get involved with the senior management team. My position in finance led me to have to evaluate a lot of alternatives, and I think I tend to work pretty hard and work to accomplish what needs to be done along the way. I can alienate, anger some people as I tell truth to power. I'm not afraid of doing that, and I'm always trying to strive to make things better. That's pretty much who I am, so.
Any questions?
I guess we could ask why the, why the Charter Commission or Committee?
I think since I came here and, Beth and I came here in 2021, kind of took a year to kind of absorb Littleton, came here primarily for my daughter and son-in-law and my two granddaughters. After listening, I think some of you probably started to wonder who's that guy that's sitting in the room. I sampled numerous, numerous meetings. And, and so as a result of working and listening to others, started to see, as I heard about this, started to see, hey, I think there are opportunities to, to bring out. hey, I think there are opportunities to bring out some elements of the, keep the best things and try and make things better within this process and make it better for the town.
Thank you.
I just think with the whole Hartford Current background and we are in need of a newspaper and you dig into stuff, I'm just saying. This doesn't work out, you know? I'll sell ads in the paper if you.
I have been approached to start a paper, I will tell you that.
Let's lock arms.
Thank you.
Thanks, man.
Saul Merini?
Good evening. Again, I know all of you. Currently, the Chair of the Park and Recreation Commission and sit on the CPC. This is a very interesting opportunity to see how to improve things. We have some, I have some insight, I guess, on some of the challenges of our existing government and how we operate. So, I think it's an interesting place to try and gather some information from the town members and figure out what's going to be a better way to do this, whether that's a large change or a small change or just further encoding what we're doing similarly.
Any questions?
No. How long have you been in Littleton, Saul?
21 years now, yeah. Moved in 2003, so.
Okay.
Thank you. And Tim Goddard?
Another new kid.
All right, good evening.
How long have you been in town?
My whole life, yeah. Lifelong resident of the town. I'm currently town moderator, as you know. Previous to that, I was town administrator in this town and two other communities. So, got a lot of the experience working with boards and committees in, you know, very different communities. Town as big as Framingham and, you know, as small as Carlisle, as far as that goes. Also, was elected as a member of the Select Board, the Planning Board, the Housing Authorities. I've got elective service here in town and, you know, some notion of how things have worked in the past and so forth. As a town administrator and as a member of the Mass Municipal Association's former government committee, I had the opportunity to work and advise a lot of communities that were looking at their structure, their form of government, looking at changes they could make. And so, I've got some experience with that. I think, as far as my interests go, I mean, I've always been interested in government, I guess, sort of goes without saying. But I think the town has done a great job in growing organically over the years, you know, both politically and so forth. I do think that we could benefit from some more structure, perhaps, of, you know, better definition of duties and responsibilities and especially in how the various offices work with one another. I know when, you know, things have probably undoubtedly changed over the years. Kind of looking at Jim here, as a former town administrator here, I often felt that the job could have been better defined. At times, it felt like you had all of the responsibility and none of the authority to do things. So, I'd like to see, I'd like to see that, you know, reduced to writing at some point.
Is that not a recipe for success?
If only to, you know, so there would be fewer misunderstandings, I think, if there, you know. And, you know, it's a charter committee. It doesn't have to be a charter, as you know. It could simply be, you know, a strong bylaw. There are lots of ways to, it doesn't necessarily need to be a home rule petition. But, so I'm interested in the process. I've been involved in lots of committees here in town. You know, I'm happy to be a resource, as Alan said, to this committee. If I'm not chosen, then that's fine with me. Way, way down the road, when the committee does bring a recommendation to town meeting, you might have thought of this, that as moderator, if I were on the committee, I would recuse myself. I would need to step down, and a temporary moderator would run that portion of the town meeting so as to avoid any. I don't think there's really a conflict of interest, but, you know, in abundance of caution, I think that's probably the way to handle it. And I think Tom Costle has agreed that that's probably the way to handle that. But, you know, very much like to be a part of things and anxious to see what the board does. Thank you.
Do you think the town moderator should have more authority?
Well, you say that, and just, you may know, in many towns, the moderator appoints all of the members of the finance committee. And I've often thought about that. There would be like World War III here in Littleton. You know, if I were to propose that, you know, I think our model actually works good because it's sort of less political when various, you know, the school gets two, you get two, and then, you know, it ensures that, you know, some rogue moderator couldn't, you know, appoint the finance committee of, you know, seven or eight cronies or whatever. You know, so I like our model, but, you know, that's something that such a committee would look at. And, you know, I know, you know, what my experience tells me, but.
Any questions?
No. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
So, this is going to be a hard decision.
It's kind of like Beat Bobby, Go Beat Bobby Clay, whatever it's called. Get behind a napkin.
So, I don't know how you want to start on this. We've decided, well, first, we were mentioning we could go between seven and nine. I think, in my opinion, based on what we've heard today, I think we have nine viable candidates, at least. So, I'm fine with heading towards the nine number. I don't know what others feel.
I would offer, if we do extend to nine, anytime you, the bigger you get, the tougher it is to manage, right? And to hit quotas and that kind of thing. But if we do go to nine, I think that we should have a select board.
As one of the members or as a?
I think so. Or at least, I mean, we is on at a minimum, but.
I'm fine with the, well, that's a, I'm, okay. Well, let's talk about that part so we can see how many we want. Do we want to have a voting member or a liaison to the committee?
In my opinion, I don't think we should have a voting member. A select board is a voting member of this committee. And I'd be sort of inclined to leave, to leave us out of even as a liaison process. I'm okay with us being informed, but I think that this should be separate from the existing government structure as much as possible. I think that's the point.
Let me just offer a counterpoint to that. And actually, I'm more in line with that than not. Depending upon who we select, there are folks that have previously been on Littleton Select Board. But I think that that institutional knowledge is important to have as part of this committee. Obviously, Tim would bring a lot of that to the table on a bunch of different levels. But that would sway my decision if we were to select some folks that have some institutional knowledge that would influence whether or not I think we should have a voting member or a liaison. To your point, we could probably extend this to nine people. We've got a lot of folks that have put themselves out there and there's a lot of talent. And even the folks that weren't able to be here tonight are excellent candidates as well. In Brian, Jeff, and Pat. So, how do you want to proceed?
So, I'm kind of, I'm somewhere between Matthew and you. I think we should have a liaison. I don't think having a voting member is necessary.
I'm not going to tie him that hill, but.
But I think, first, I think it will be tough for a select board member to make all of meetings, given that we already meet twice a month. If this is committee is meeting twice a month, you're basically.
When is the last monthly one that twice?
That's true. Given that this is our fourth meeting in eight days.
Saturday counts as three meetings.
Yeah. I think it will be hard for a select board member to commit to the number of meetings this is going to involve. But I think having a liaison and an alternate is a good model so that, so that we have someone there that's, has the pulse of the meetings and can contribute, but not necessarily. I'm okay with giving up our vote. I don't know. You expressed interest before, Gary. I don't know what your feeling is.
Yeah. I mean, my interest, you know, helping create the charter itself, what our charge was and the work we put into that. But my concern is we potentially wouldn't have seven to nine qualified applicants. You know, when we, we look at every meeting that we put on, Jim reads off a list of, you know, open vacancies and points. So, I didn't have high expectations, but I recognize this is, this could be really big for Littleton on many levels. So, I'm so glad that we got such a talent pool to come out. I would be willing to be a liaison, for sure. And probably, or any select board member that did it, we would want to kick off the first meeting, set the first meeting because there's not a chair yet or anything. Get the ball rolling like that and kind of reiterate the charge and maybe give a little bit of talk and introduce the Collins Center and things like that. But then try to be as many meetings as possible so we kind of get a direction of where the committee is going and we can, you know, help report back if needed. Liaison, for me, would be most important, I think.
Okay.
No, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Matthew, where have you heard from?
Yeah, Matthew, you're okay with having a liaison?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think Chuck's point about having members with existing town government experience is very important, and that's the primary reason why I was suggesting that a sitting member doesn't participate. So, I'm good.
Okay. And I'm, and I'm fine helping out as like an alternate. I mean, we can do a liaison and an alternate so that, like, Gary, if you want to be the primary, I have no problem, like, attending meetings that you can't or participating as well. I mean, we can always cover meetings.
Sure.
Okay. So, now, we're back to seven to nine. So, nine, the problem with nine is more just making sure you can organize enough people to preserve quorum. So, is that your concern, Chuck? Mainly with nine or?
Well, that and the larger any committee gets, the more difficult it is to manage it. And it's just not as efficient. If you have two hours slotted and you want everybody to have their input, it's just.
I wonder, though, if this committee also ends up with a lot of little subtasks that more actually make it easier. Do you have a feel for seven to nine?
Just throwing it out there, what do we think of appointing seven into alternates? I mean, I can see folks, you know, if the committee decides to meet, for example, every other.
Is this thing on?
That's a no. If the folks, if folks decide, once they're appointed, that they're going to meet every other Wednesday, for example, and somebody cannot make every other Wednesday, period, then, you know, for example, that might, an alternate might be a good idea. Or if somebody needs to, you know, something, circumstances change halfway through the process or, I don't know. It's a little tricky because then the alternate would still kind of be committed because they couldn't step in unless they've been to every meeting, which is asking a lot.
The only Board of Appeals runs that way, ideally runs that way. But with them, let's say, I run alternate on the only Board of Appeals, and somebody were absent, so I sat in on a hearing. I have to sit on that hearing to, because I, you know, had the facts and I have to disseminate them and come up with, if it gets continued, that kind of thing. And if an alternate on this committee were sitting in for somebody that had different views, I just, I think I'd rather have nine.
Yeah, I'm not thinking of like one meeting. I'm thinking of like, I'm thinking more of like a, somebody, if somebody has to.
Professional commitment or something like that?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just going to go back to when we, when me personally, we were thinking seven to nine, it was because we didn't know we were going to get such a great.
Fifteen.
That's true.
So, I'm very comfortable with having nine because this is heavy lift. I would be surprised if, I mean, people have lives. We heard the diverse pop group we have, and I think they're going, they're going to miss meetings here and there. So, you, having that extra, you know, having that.
Don't get me out right away.
Having, but having five, you know, as a quorum, I think, is a comfortable number to make sure that we always have five. And nine gives us that flexibility. And there's plenty of work for nine people to contribute to, I think, with all we're trying to get accomplished, so.
I guess I'd argue against alternates. I think the point of, this thing has a through line from beginning to end, and it doesn't seem fair to ask somebody to spend this much time on something and not have a vote on the board. So, I think that everybody who wants to be on this should commit to doing it from beginning to end. I was going to push for a smaller, like, close, like, seven instead of nine. But, you know, I could be persuaded otherwise. I just think, my only concern is that, just to make sure things get done in an efficient manner, I think the fact that we're going to have some professional help kind of ameliorates that to some extent. So, I guess I would say nine with no alternates would be my opinion.
Mr. Knox, do you mind if I pick your brain a little bit? How many were on the Government Study Committee when you were out in high school?
This is a little strange, but we had eight.
That is strange. Why, don't ask the question, Wes. You know the answer, right? I'm going to split the baby. Thanks. It ran efficiently?
Sounds like nine.
Yes, it did. Because you have definitely different avenues that you have to go and do research on.
Yeah.
And eight still has a quorum of five, so.
Correct.
Okay. So, it sounds like we're going with nine. And how do we want to proceed from here?
We could all propose our membership and see where we overlap.
Is it going to be like American Idol or?
I mean, I don't want to make it thumbs up, thumbs down, but we could all propose, you know, people that we believe are 100%. We think they should be on the committee.
We'll text you. You tell him.
Okay.
No?
Or you put it on this and hand it to him. I don't know. With this sheet here? All we need is that sheet. This is the only form we need.
Well, Matthew's not here, so we'd have to text Jim, probably.
Oh, I see where he's at, yeah. Because we have the form.
I'm just going to put this out there as a blanket statement. Obviously, we've got 15 people that stepped forward, and I think that would be well-served with any of the 15 as members. In the event that you are not chosen, not pointing at anybody in particular, but in the event that you're not chosen, it's, you know, there's, it's very much appreciated. It's difficult for us to sit up here and, you know, it's like getting picked for the basketball team on the schoolyard. Pick me, pick me, right? So, it's not an easy process for us to go through. I'd prefer to have some sort of, not anonymity, but I think we can get to that point if we're, if we all give our votes to Jim. Jim tallies them, and then we can say, okay, so candidate one got four votes.
The names. At that point, you'd say the name.
Well, you say the names, but I just didn't want to pick out a name because, oh, he's playing favorites.
So, before we do this, I'd just like to, well, I'd like to thank everyone for putting their name in. And if anyone, after hearing everyone else say, "I don't feel qualified," or someone else is more and wants to withdraw their name before we vote, feel free to stand up and do that, just so it's not awkward on that front.
Yeah.
So.
So, we're going to take the sheet.
I will need a clean sheet. I took notes on my sheet. Do you have an extra packet?
Look around the room and say, "Oh, no, not these folks." Go ahead and let us know.
Mark, you're going with Matthew just texting Jim?
Yeah.
Did you get that, Matthew?
Right, so we're just circling nine people?
Texting Jim, is that correct?
Yes. Nine names. Please.
Morris, do you have seven? I mean, if you have, I think we have...
That's like a bullet vote, though.
I know. This is a great group.
I'm doing mine in pencil, in case we have to re-vote.
Couple of people I want on other committees, I'm already thinking.
Yeah, some redundancy, right?
What the rule should be is that nobody can leave without some sort of appointment.
Oh, my gosh, I know.
An appointment to something else?
Yeah.
This is, this is, Karen, we just wait on Karen.
Yeah, this isn't going to happen.
No cheating, Joe.
I'm trying to think. I started to...
How does one cheat?
I started to rank them.
I mean, I had the thought process, but if we're not going to be on it, I'm not going to let another elected board go in because it instantly brings politics in my brain. Potentially brings politics if you're on an elected board right now.
Joe?
But, yeah.
We have three people that are...
That's why it wouldn't work.
That's not, that's not a statutory...
No, you can do anybody. Anyone can be on. We could even have two select board members on. Collins said so. What a great group. Why are these people on other committees?
Right?
That's what I'm saying.
Want to sign their paper for the select board?
Post Jim at the door.
Leave it before the vote.
Sorry?
Said, "We're going to post you at the door. Nobody leaves without some sort of appointment."
Exactly.
It's not this committee, it's another.
Whoever doesn't sign my papers doesn't get that vote.
All right. Matthew gave me his submission. You got those written down?
Sorry.
Here's a couple of them. You can start tallying.
This one's from you, Chuck?
Folded, yes. Double folded is not me.
Why? I don't need it.
Yeah, this is one more.
Oh, this is one.
Yeah.
Who's this?
Karen. Well, we're anonymous right now.
I understand that, but I need, I...
You should have five members, four plus the text.
Right. But I need to put a chart, so I need to know who's which to put the row in.
Just number them.
Just number them. Just, you know which one's mine.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying.
Thank you.
I mean, I thought we were keeping it completely anonymous.
Blue pen.
Let me get these things. The rows don't have to... Yeah, you're just, you're just doing like tick marks, right? One, two, three, four people on that.
He created a chart out of that.
Doesn't matter who voted for it. You've got four tick marks or five tick marks.
Do you need me to sign your papers, Joe? You need papers signed?
So, if nine people have three votes, that's all it takes, right?
You might be right.
That's way too...
If there's more than nine people that have three votes, then we've got more to talk about, but...
Some deliberation. Or, I guess you go in first of who had the most tick marks. There'll be somebody, there'll be a few maybe to all five of us.
Karen, you know what?
I don't know, because, I mean, maybe, maybe, you know, somebody who's, maybe one person being in impacts with another person, you know?
No, nobody in this house. Don't do that.
Okay. Gary, Mark, who did black pen, who did blue pen?
I, black.
Mine's blue.
I was black. Karen was...
Mine's a purplish-blue. Yeah. Matches your eyes.
Thanks.
I think I circled mine.
Hey, can I, can I do something?
Oh, boy.
Folks, I'm just going to, and I'd like to do a little bio on us. We may have done tell us who they were and when they came to town. Mind if I go first?
Sure. My name's Chuck DeCoste. I'm on the Select Board, and my family and I moved to Littleton in 2007, and I echo what everybody that chose Littleton as their community, five children that went through the school system, and best choice we made as a family. And so, I echo and feel what you're feeling. It's just, it's such a great community. Anytime there's any challenges, the whole, the whole community steps up, and it doesn't matter if they know who you are or they don't know who you are. It's just, it's, it gives you like that, that warm hug.
Gary Wilson, been on the Select Board for three years, and TinCon before that, and a bunch of subcommittees.
We're doing that, too?
No, I won't get into that. Pretty much a lifelong resident of Littleton. Came very young age. My grandparents, some third generation, I guess, in Littleton. Was in Army for 23 years. Got out, worked for the State Department, Bureau of Consular Affairs for several years, retired with the State Department, worked for the Department of Transportation before that, DOD before that. So, came, wanted to come back to Littleton. I have a special needs son with autism. We wanted to get back to Littleton instead of traveling every three years, moving my son to another, another post. So, we moved back. I knew Littleton was great. I knew Massachusetts had great special education programs, and Littleton was a great community. So, I moved back to my hometown, and all three of my children went through the school system. They're all in their twenties now, and here I am. I wanted to, and I'll let you know, growing up here, leaving for so long and coming back, oh, my goodness, the whole community was, the whole community had almost flipped, you know, except for Joe. But, no, it was, it was like having to literally meet, reinvent myself and meet new people and see, it was amazing how the town had kind of turned over and had to meet a lot of new people and get back involved. I wanted to stay involved in the community and, and public service, and this is, what a better way, best way to do it is you're in your own hometown, really, you can really contribute to, so.
Hi, I'm Karen Morrison. I moved here about five and a half years ago, so I'm also a recent spreadsheet builder. We did the concentric circles more, but, but, yeah.
Venn diagram.
We moved here from Colorado, where I had just gotten involved in politics on a very, very, very small scale, but was interested in it and saw how much of a difference it can make. So, when I moved out here, once I got over my cultural, culture shock and understanding how everything works out here and how different it is, I, I wanted to make a difference and wanted to bring a different perspective to the board, and so I ran, and this is my first term.
Matthew, do you want to say something? Introduce yourself?
Sure. My, my wife and I moved to Littleton in 2001, about a year after we moved here with a, we had a one-year-old son and our house burned to the ground. And the support and outpouring of love from the residents was truly astonishing, and I think it made us both fall in love with the place. We, we raised our two kids here, and as we have more time, as they're getting older and they're actually both out of the house, we both decided to volunteer and try to give back some to the town. And I ended up on the Select Board. Yay me. But I think it's a great town. I mean, you know, it's all the same things everyone else has said, but I feel like I'm happy to have raised my children here.
I'm Mark Granbacher. I moved here in 95. We drew the circles out. We lived in Winchester before we moved out here after we both were working, and we did the concentric circles to find a community that we could afford along the Route 2 corridor, and this was the first one we could afford to live in, so we picked Littleton that way. I got involved in town government. When my kids were little, we would come to the library every Tuesday night, and the librarians were great. And at one point, there was a vacancy on the library board, and someone threw my name in there and said, "Hey, you should be on this committee." I still am trying to figure out which librarian is responsible for that. And that's how I got involved in the town. I was on the library board for 16 years before I ran for the Select Board. I, we, I grew up in Ohio. There's not the town meeting form of government. My first real exposure to town meeting was when we were building the high school, and everyone was all up in arms about whether to put in a pool or not. And then after that, there was the question of the override, and I had no idea what was going on in town government, and you go to town meeting and everyone gets up and speaks poorly against, they go and complain about all the articles, but then they all support them in the end. It's the weirdest thing that ever happens, right? You're standing there and trying to read the vote, and it's like, oh, this is going to go down in flames, and then it's like 95% in favor, and it's like, how did that happen? So, like everyone says, it's the worst form of government, except for all the others. So, I'm happy to be up here and helping out, and I'm really grateful for everyone else that volunteers their time for this and all the other committees we have in town.
Killing time while Jim was trying to do math.
Oh, wow. You need a calculator.
Shoes off.
We have eight, eight confirmed positions. The ninth position, the Select Board member is not being counted as a ninth, correct?
Correct.
All right. There is a tie, a three-way tie for the ninth position.
Do we have a mom wrestle?
You can have a mom wrestle. So, but I've got the eight, eight names. How would you like to propose it, Mr. Chairman?
Want to just give, give those three to us and we'll re-vote?
Why don't we re-vote those three? But in the meantime, do you want me to hold on to who the other eight are or?
Yeah, we'll read off at once.
All right.
So, eight, eight got...
Eight got the majority.
Sure.
And three are...
I, I understand what's happening. I know. No, I'm just wondering, the part that I'm wondering about is not wanting to know the other eight before we vote on our last, on number nine, in terms of, for me, balance and there's...
Or do you want to read off the, the eight that we know?
I don't know. I'm just, I mean, it's a consideration for me. I don't know about anybody else.
I would kind of prefer to know who we are, before we finalize.
Those are the three that are tied. What did you, what did you have for the eight?
Matthew, what did you say?
I said, "I'd prefer to know who we, who we are, who we have, who we're voting on before..."
So, who's in the affirmative, I guess, is what Karen's asking. So, if we know that, it might have an impact on...
Okay, so I'll read off the...
Or just share it if you don't want to.
Or just share it.
Or you can just...
Pass it with us.
The ones with the star next to it of the, of the eight, okay?
Then, can you text Matthew?
Sure.
Thank you.
Actually, will you see that?
No.
Picture and I'll...
No.
This is high-tech.
Actually, I'll do that, too. I'll just take a picture. That's brilliant technology.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this isn't hard to remember, Chuck. Come on.
Do you know what these are?
Of course, yeah, so...
Oops.
Hey, keep it down out there, Mr. Moderator. Electoral College, I heard you. Oh, sorry. And this is, yeah, I already got it by head. So, we're voting for one of those three.
Yeah.
Okay.
Karen, do you want me to text you a picture of the other thing that's going around?
That's great. Thank you.
Of course.
Technology.
We need any discussion?
Discussion on these three, I think, pretty much.
I think we should just do it the same as we did the other.
Can you text me that as well?
Sure. I thought it was... Chuck, can you give us all pieces of paper?
That's true.
Take the one?
Yeah. It's 15-4, right?
Yeah.
Where's Ryan when you need him?
What do you mean? He has all these little cubes cut up for us. I know.
Here you go.
Did you send it to him?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you send it?
Yes.
To me? Just kidding. All right, stars.
It is. I don't like it. I don't like it at all.
I know. You almost want to make, let's just make it 15.
I only just got challenged, so...
Mine's not folded.
Oh, my God. It doesn't matter at this point.
You have Matthew's, right?
No, I don't have it as yet.
What? I'm sorry. I wasn't aware of who...
Matthew, text, you need to text back one name out of the three.
Did you, do you know the three that are tied?
No, I don't know the three.
I'll send them to you right now. This is all public record, right? The texts going back and forth?
It is not. It is definitely on the record.
I said that. I said it's all public record. Did you send it, the three names?
He's going to, he's going to submit the deciding vote.
Well, this, oh, really?
Yeah.
This is on the record.
That's on the record. All right, so you send him a text with the three names that, did you do that already?
No, you were just doing it.
Yeah, but I did, someone on the foyer requested my phone.
Yeah, we're doing, we're doing a record. It's easier if it's all on one chain.
It's open if we can do it, really.
So, we can probably tell who we voted for before, right?
Matthew, you're not on a beach somewhere, are you?
No.
All right. Making sure.
I'm in a very small room.
Okay.
With a bad internet.
Can you get out?
Rubber walls. Did he break the tie?
He did.
Okay. So, you want to mark the, start the other one?
I'm sorry?
Start the other one?
You will. I'm handicapping it.
What do you need?
I don't know, I'm just guessing. Go ahead, you do your thing, I just...
You think it's easy. You think it's easy.
No, no, we know it's not.
You get paid just fine.
Three years with him is like 20 years.
Who's him, me?
You have got more great.
Not kidding.
All right, so...
So, so, hang on. I'm sorry, Jim?
Yes, sir.
There were four names that had two votes, not three.
Oh, boy.
They were.
There were.
And I think we need to do it again because of that.
Yep, that's right. I am sorry.
Okay.
That's okay. It'll be reflected.
Is everyone still in?
Yeah, see what you get, you're so mental!
Jim with her?
Oh, you're not on the committee.
Thank you, Matthew.
Jim?
Yes.
With your admin?
Where's my admin? She's in Florida.
We're hanging out.
So, we know who the four are now, right?
No, no, you don't know who the four...
I don't, 'cause I...
Yeah, we do, we get the totals right here.
First decision is gonna be putting the select board down to three.
That's what Ares.
Yep, a lot of places are. Westford? Westford's three, isn't it?
I don't think so. No, it's five.
See, there was, somebody that's really big is...
Got it, Matthew, thank you.
Yep, that's why I was confused. I thought it was the next round, genetic number of votes down, but...
Yep, no, thank you.
I can tell you.
No, the bottom.
The bottom. The bottom.
I'm gonna change my mind, so you can...
Standard?
Yeah.
Everyone's gonna change their mind.
We're fine.
Everyone keeping it where it was?
Unless Matthew changed.
Matthew changed it.
Oh, he did?
Yeah.
That changed things?
So, correct, there's two, two and one.
Okay, so now we re-vote the twos.
So, the one's out? Unless Matthew wants to change his vote.
So...
No, I'm sticking with my vote.
So, there's four, four.
There's four names, there's five voting, so there's two for one, two for one, and one for one.
Okay, so then we'll re-vote the twos.
It's the only way, that's the only first way to do it. We have to do it that way.
So, just the ones that have two.
Eliminate the one that got one vote, and then it goes back.
And now it has to, now it has to resolve itself.
This is why we have an electoral college.
So, it's a hanging chat, hold on.
So, now it's down to two candidates, Matthew, so...
Yep, I'm waiting for the names.
Me, too.
There's gonna be a fight after this.
Those are the two names, circled.
Circled.
Circled. Sending it to you now, Matthew.
Thank you. I think I know, but...
Thank you. Wow. Now, buddy, just by the number of select board members, this has to be the end.
Yes. I'm gonna vote for none of you both.
Dee?
You can? Not yet.
What is this?
That's your, you sent that out to us.
Okay, so now I have...
He has one more, Karen.
Oh, okay.
Done.
Thank you.
This is how government works!
Did it brought out the clickers?
Oh, yeah, clickers!
Oh, man, I kept looking up at the screen.
Matthew's out of distance, though.
Could've done peer voting, too.
Circled stars, Mr. Chairman. We have a committee.
So, Mr. Chairman can announce them, right?
He can.
Show Karen first.
We have to vote, we'll have to vote on the committee and have it. As part of the charter, we vote to appoint the committee.
Correct. Right, and then you have the option, at either, either this meeting, the select board can check, can select the chair, vice chair and clerk. If not, you can do it at the very first meeting.
Yeah, that's what I was...
In which the Collins Center will be there to outline the charter process and help facilitate initial discussions.
So, we appoint the chair, vice chair and clerk?
You have the option. If you choose to do that, or you have the committee do that at the first meeting.
But if they, if we do it and they wanna change it...
From what the experience these people have gone through right now, let them do it.
There will be drinks served.
Well, you'll never, you'll never wanna appoint somebody that isn't, doesn't wanna do it.
You don't wanna read it?
No, I was, I don't usually make motions.
Okay, so this is just putting the committee together.
This is making a motion?
In the form of a motion, people find out if they're on or they're not. Gotcha, alright. It's fancy.
I move to appoint the following individuals to the...
Lifetime Charter Committee.
To the...
Lifetime, yeah.
The Littleton, what do we call this? The Charter, the Littleton Charter Committee. Alan McCray, Betsy Bowling, Charlotte Dawkins, Joseph Knox, Kevin Brogan, Kyle Bupp, Karen McCloskey, Robert Rounds, Timothy Goddard.
Second.
Moved by Gary, second by Chuck.
I wanna verify.
Just put, it was on the side of the table.
We have to do a roll call vote since Matthew's online. We'll start with you, Matthew.
I, yes, Matthew votes yes.
Karen?
Karen, yes.
Chuck?
Chuck, yes.
Gary?
Gary's yes.
And Mark's a yes, so, thank you very much, everyone for putting in your name.
Now, there is, everyone has to go to the town clerk in the next, before the first meeting and get sworn in.
Yeah, and I don't know how we went to organize the first meeting, if we went to allow them to do it, or suggest dates, or... 'Cause they can't, well...
I mean, we can, even as far as putting...
Well...
You want me to? Let me, I'm not gonna, Gary, to be the liaison for the select board. Wanna clarify that?
And an alternate.
Sure.
Mark being an alternate.
Sure.
Second.
Gary nominated as the, or the liaison, and me as an alternate. Matthew, in favor?
Matthew's yes.
Karen?
Aye.
Kind of a leading question.
Chuck?
Chuck, yes.
Gary, you accept?
Yes.
And Mark's a yes, so...
So, we can actually put out an email to the group, to the individuals, with the...
We'll put out like a...
A few meeting times, see what works.
Yep, okay.
It might, it might be worthwhile, where there's, there's some, some new folks, and actually, having some experience on it'll be good. But have like a, an introductory, how our government works, open meeting law, that kinda stuff, just so folks aren't...
That'll get discussed in the first meeting. Diane Corr, we'll have Diane Corr there, the Collins Center.
They're there for the first meeting.
So, are we going to find out when they're available, based on some of their availability, too? Or are they at our...
Well, if you want to as a liaison, if you wanna let me know, if you wanna give me a date or two, that I can...
What's the, what's the charter say when we're supposed to do it first? I think, I think it had, it had a timeframe in there.
It did?
To start, yeah.
A date certain.
Let me look that up. Sorry. Okay, we can, but that can, that can take care of it.
It's not going to be next week. I mean, it'll be the end of the month, I think, or the first week of March. It's, I know it was supposed to be...
Okay.
But I think this process had to happen in February, and then we hopefully can meet by the end of February, would be...
So, maybe we'll put out a doodle poll to...
For what days of the week?
And then figure out, you know, what day of the week works for folks, and figure out how to proceed, so...
And then from that point forward, once we have a chair, the chair will be able to do that. Just put out the doodle poll and make sure everybody can meet on a regular basis. I think that would probably be the best way to work. The Collins Center will be driving a little bit of this first one, correct?
Yeah, and they'll drive as much as you want them to drive it.
I think they can...
Do we want them to...
They'll drive it as much as you want them to drive it.
Yeah, I think the first meeting is, will be the biggest part for us, just to make sure, we'll go over the charter, mission and some of the discussion that we've had, and I guess some expectations from our, our board about working together and some of that stuff. Diane will give you guys a quick briefing on open meeting law and things like that, just so you're aware of the, how the meetings need to be run, legal side of it. And then the Collins, we'll just hand it off to the Collins Center and let you guys have at it. And you can blast them with all the questions you need, and it'll be great.
Come up with a schedule and timeframes.
Yeah, we'll get it, yeah, try to get a six-month schedule for you guys at least, or three-month chunks, so you guys know what's coming, so you can prepare for it and things like that. Whatever works, whatever works for you guys.
Thank you all.
This is absolutely fantastic. This is a...
It's exciting.
Could be some huge changes, could be some very small changes. I think, but change, like was said by a member here, is a good thing, so I'm, I'm excited.
Hopefully, we'll do a good job of implementing all the changes that are suggested.
Right?
Yes.
Double the details, right?
See you in two years. No.
What are you waiting for?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone.
Any questions, please reach out through Jim's office. So, someone will make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by, Chuck? Seconded by Karen. All those in favor, Matthew? Karen?
Aye.
Chuck?
Chuck's aye.
Gary?
Gary's aye.
Marks an aye. Thank you, everyone.